Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Motion to approve minutes of May 6th.
A motion to approve the minutes for May 6th? We have a second and a third, all in favor? And we're on to new business, and we're gonna be reviewing the proposed budgets for the Quavon Regional School Districts.
Excellent.
All right, so we're ready to jump in.
Yeah.
This is superintendent, Quavon, thanks for having us. This is Stacy Scarry, she's our interim business manager. It's kind of a long story, next year she'll be our business manager, but we had hired someone that left us mid-year. And so Stacy has been with us for years, and she's agreed to step in, she's doing a great job. So, thank you for having us. So, we came last year, we told you a little bit, you know, about our priorities. I know that you've had a lot of conversations about how schools are funded and the challenges that we're facing and municipalities are facing as well. So, we really wanna start with that. We know this is not easy for our towns, and it's, you know, I hope you also acknowledge it's not easy for us as well. We wanna be good partners, I say that, and I mean that seriously. So, we're gonna kinda tell you about how our budget came along and the steps that we've taken to try and reduce it as much as we feel is feasible and still provide our kids with a good education. So, some of our priorities are around providing academic support. So, coming out of COVID, our students are still not making the academic progress that we would hope that they would have made. It's just taking longer for them to rebound from that. We're still really paying attention to that. Along with that, we have seen an increase in the support that we need to provide our students who have diverse learning needs. So, whether it is mental health, or special education, or things like that, that is very important to us. We also feel that the models of inclusion are more supportive for our students, and less restricted, and we can get greater academic gains more quickly for them. We also have taken a really hard look. We have a new director of student support, who oversees our special education programming, 504 programming, things like that. She's been amazing. It's one of the reasons we were able to honestly reduce our budget a little bit at the last. She has worked really hard to say, "Look at our data. Where are our students' needs? Where are we having to send our students out for programming? And can we do something here at Quavon to keep our own students in district and provide them with as good as, if not a better, education than they're receiving in some of these out-of-district placements?" So, we have returned a lot of students back to our schools. We have a full autism program that we used to partner with the Newland Center, and now Quavon has fully taken that over. When we did that, we had to add a few positions, such as our own physical therapists, occupational therapists. That has now been in place. I think we're moving to our third year on that program where we have supported it. We are seeing amazing results for our students. So, our classrooms, actually, Dr. Marshall, you should come see this. Our classrooms used to look like cubbies, and students would be working in our cubbies. We still have some cubbies, but many of the cubbies have come down, and our students are working in small groups with their peers, with one adult versus one-on-one. And it's been really amazing. So, we have strong programming. We've reached out to local school districts, and we have said, "If you would like to tuition your students into our program versus sending them out to other collaboratives or programs, we would like to talk to you about that, because we believe we can offer them, again, as good as, if not better, programming for a reduced rate." So, we have reached out to, I think, about 12 districts in the area. We've gotten a few phone calls. But where we have spaces, we are willing to entertain that as a source of revenue for us. So, next year, we are planning to use our rural school aid to support this idea of creating programs for our own students. The needs we currently have are for a language-based learning program that is for students who might struggle with dyslexia, reading difficulties, things like that. We are going to start that program for grades three and four. The students will come from multiple schools. Our students from all of our elementary schools into one classroom. They will have an inclusion time where they're going into the regular classroom, but they'll also get their specialized instruction. The other program that we're going to start is an alternative learning program. We are finding that we have challenges at our high school for some of our students. I think this is nationwide, you can read all the research on it, that are just struggling to make it through high school, to find their motivation due to high anxiety, other mental health struggles. And so, we are planning to start, and host at our New Braintree school, a program for our students, our high school students, that looks different than a typical traditional high school pathway. And the last program that we've had before, and we have, you know, done away with it a few years ago when we had to make a budget cut, is a middle school therapeutic classroom. We have a therapeutic classroom at our elementary level that's for students who struggle to regulate themselves emotionally. We have really amazing success with that program. But what we did at the middle high school level was we merged them together, because our numbers have been lower. Again, we're facing these challenges, and we feel that we can better support our students by having a middle school therapeutic classroom. So, I'm sure what you're saying is, you know, okay, you're adding all of these things.
How much did you save?
I wanna be very transparent with you, we are. We feel it will create efficiencies and cost savings over time. We've seen that with our autism program, and we believe that these programs will do the same thing. So, we'll talk about our budget and how this sort of plays out. So, I think Stacy's gonna start sort of big picture where we're at.
Okay, so I think you all received from me the new assessment, but I also showed, this is our proposed three. So, from proposed one, which would have been like, if you wanted to keep every service we had in the school at the current price, it was going to be, our original budget would have been $42,482. So, anybody have a copy of this?
Yeah, I have the proposed two, I don't have the proposed three.
Okay, proposed three was sent out, I can give you a copy. Oh, yeah, my dad, yes, he had a heart attack, he's gone now, so, yes. Okay, so, proposed one said at $42,482, and that's if you wanted to not change anything in the school. So, there'd be a decrease in price of insurance, as you can see, school choice assessments, there would be $42,000. So, we, you know, we obviously knew that was an unrealistic budget. So, we proposed by Level Two, and then this last proposal that we agreed upon, that we brought to school committee two weeks ago, we cut $1.6 million from proposed one. Now, on the second page that I just handed out, tells you kinda how we did it and what we were up against. So, we had obviously some increases I just spoke about. Our retired teacher health insurance, which is assessed by the state, so we have to pay it. There's no way to, you know, not to change the number. Our insurances that we need for the buildings. Our school choice assessment and our special education assessment increases, those are bound by the state, the state tells us what we have to pay. So, what we did is we really, being new with this, I went line by line on the budget, and I tried to decrease everything I could. So, we decreased supplies, materials, we moved some building improvement projects to future years, warfound others sources. So, I don't know if you know, like, if your child plays basketball tonight, we've taken school property use, and we kinda have that fund for what we thought was like the nice-to-have, but now we're using them for yearly maintenance. So, to refinish the floors, we're using school property use. So, we're trying to take some of that revenue and use it for things we need, and not, and just really eliminated the nice-to-have. We had athletic equipment and uniforms, again, we're gonna make the uniforms work, and we're gonna make the equipment work, so we cut all that out of the budget. We have a new director of curriculum, and she sent out a survey to all our teachers and say, "Let's look at the software you're using, what do you really need?" And she kept a spreadsheet to see who's using what. We had, we eliminated over $30,000 of software this year that we felt only enough, that we weren't being utilized to its fullest extent, so we cut it. The IT department did a staff review organization, so he had, he's reduced his IT staff by one person. Toronto School Sending Tuition, again, the state tells us what we need to pay, and that was reduced. We've also had a reduction in force of nine physicians. So, with that said, we also, our original proposed budget, we wanted to try to stop using our E and D by three quarters of a million dollars, but we decided for the proposal three, we have to bring it back up to $750,000 in order to get your assessment down. And we're gonna use our school choice revenue, so basically, everything that we're gonna get in next year for school choice, we're going to use. We usually try to save a little bit of it, but whatever we take in is what we're gonna use to offset teacher expense. And again, I already mentioned, we're parking these for yearly maintenance.
Question, is school choice up or down?
So, our sending, our basically, our sending went out a little bit. That's why you see our increase of our school choice assessment increase. That's going out, and then, but we're picking in about the same.
Number, the same number of students, basically?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's definitely important to understand, all of the school districts that surround us have declining enrollments.
Yeah.
Okay, the fewer kids, the harder it works. Fewer kids leaving, fewer kids coming, because there's fewer children in our schools. Not a surprise. The interesting thing, I was here for the Monty Tech thing the other night, or a couple weeks ago, I guess, and you never heard the word "special education." You never heard the word "about autistic children." You never heard the word about children who just can't seem to, you know, manage in a particular kind of environment. There's a reason for that, guys. They don't have the opportunity, sometimes go to school, play Monty Tech, or this equipment that they could be significantly harmed with if they were, you know, in a shock, and then in the classroom, and they're having difficulty managing their own behavior, and many times they are. But I understand, all of this stuff that they described is unnecessarily there. Which is, which is nice, but they're a different organization, trying to do the different things that they do very well. But someone, if you were sitting there and you're saying, "Oh gee, well, how come they got all this for this challenge?" This is our special education population, and it is part of who we are as a community, as a town. And there are students who are in the town that are who have some immune, as they're described. And we are happy to see that you're returning them to the district so they can have a community, and stay in the community. And it is just what we spend in special transportation is what, almost equal to or more than what we spend for all the other kids. Sending kids out from local communities, because some of them we have, we have, you know, most of them, they just, they're out in Project Mountain, and those kinds of things. We can't manage that home, so that transportation, okay? And Melvin University for that transportation. Only regularly day transfer school transportation is instituted in Melvin. So, that is the legal difference. But it used to be in the old days, in my days, we spent more money in special education than we did about 50% of the time for all of the other students. So, that's just, we're, you know, I said, if you were not, you didn't hear, "Oh, we got to spend money on this, we got to spend money on this program, we got to..." They got to say, "Oh, we have a new program for them, oh, we have a new program." And so, it's a little more upbeat than your story.
I'd like to, I'd like to tell you about our new programs too, though. But first, one thing I just wanna clarify. First of all, I don't, you know, we're sort of like presenting this to you. I don't want you to think this has been easy. You know, lots of sleepless nights, but as far as the software goes, one of the reasons we're able to reduce the software is because we put, we're implementing some new high-quality curriculum materials that come with some similar packages. So, it's a comprehensive curriculum, and so therefore, we don't need some of those software packages anymore. If we're saying we want our teachers to use this curriculum, we mean that, and we want them to use the software that comes with it versus having an add-on type of software. So, I kinda wanted to clarify that as well, as Stacy was kinda going through this. And the other thing I think that is important to just understand, because you're gonna be out in the public, and you're, you'll probably get some questions when these hit, you know, cuts hit. We try not to leave any department untouched. So, you'll find that athletic had some reductions, our band, chorus, orchestra had some reductions. So, we are, you know, trying to be very, very thoughtful. We don't want to devastate any of our programs, obviously. And it's going to be a tight year, but it feels like everybody is taking a little bit, so I wanna say that. And I didn't talk about our innovation pathway program, so if you'll allow me five minutes to do my spiel, I would like to talk about that for a second. So, I know, you know, Monty Tech has some amazing programs, and our kids who choose vocational education, we fully support them. What we're finding is that more and more students, and I'm sure some of you have, you know, children that are high school age, or seem to be, right? Families and students are thinking a lot about incurring debt to go to college, especially a four-year college. So, we have seen a bit of decline in students really seeking that four-year college education. With our graduating class, I have to tell you, I think our number's gonna be incredibly high. We have a, just a really incredible group of students graduating this year. But people are being much more thoughtful about seeking the education and the career that is going to have the best payoff for them, that doesn't cause them to have to go into debt for years beyond, you know, getting that degree. So, some of the things that we implemented, and we're super proud of this, and we wanna thank the town of Barry so much for this program, is for the first time ever, we had an integrated emergency academy for our students. It was really a fire academy. Our departments from New Braintree, OCAM, Barry, Hubbardston, Hardwick, came together with Quavon, and they ran a program for 30 of our students, basically a little junior firefighter EMS academy, Level One. And 30 of our students were able to participate, be beyond excited about it, and were talking about, you know, increasing those opportunities for next year. One of the things that I heard upon becoming superintendent was from a select board member in Hardwick, and you probably know who he is, but he said, "You have to get the EMT." You know, "You do nothing else, you've gotta get kids who want to work and volunteer in these communities." And that is true. We just, we need our kids to be civic-minded like that for their own towns where they reside. Our hope is we provide them a great education, they go off and do all the things they wanna do, but our hope is that they stay here with you in these towns, and they help, you know, build the future with us, right? So, I just wanna give a shout-out for that, and sort of let you know, that's a program we ran, we were thrilled to run it. The other program that we have are these innovation pathways. So, sort of to get, the state was seeing that kids are seeking vocational opportunities, and yet there's only so much space in our vocational schools. And so, they offered this idea of creating these innovation pathways where we could give kids more hands-on experiences, and they could leave with us with certifications that should they seek a job after high school, they could get an entry-level type of program. So, for example, computer-aided design, or understanding basic robotics, right? They could go out and think of applying to different types of companies. We have seen a real interest in this area. We've expanded our programming through grants. There are, there's something called the 1-8 Foundation. They work a lot in conjunction with WPI, Project Lead the Way. They offer certification and trainings. So, we're giving certifications in everything, from accounting software programs. Again, we're thankful, we have a student today take part in the OSHA training. They're receiving certification.
This is very sponsored.
Yeah, in precision manufacturing measurement. So, our kids are getting more and more of these certifications, Adobe, Microsoft, different things like that, and they're leaving us with those certifications. So, that's something that we've also done. So, I'll stop telling you about all those things, but I felt it's important to mention.
I think one other thing that's important to mention is if you take a look at the sheet, and you go down, you look at, it talks about, you know, required minimum contribution, when they start to build their budget, I'll tell you a little bit about required minimum, you know, contribution. What do you see, Barry, when you have to start there? Why, how does the state say, "He don't owe anyone that I can?" They started Barry out with the highest, wasn't they?
Yeah.
Minimum local contribution in.
No, New Braintree.
Oh, for my, yeah, Barry was the second highest. Which is at what, 5.57? So, when you start there, and you see, New Braintree is at 5.85, and then you look at, when you go down and you look at the total assessments, Barry's assessment is 0.8, and New Braintree is 6.39.
And how was that number, how do you come up with that number?
Anybody wanna try to explain that? Their mobile contribution is something that's calculated.
Oh, I mean, why is it always higher than, say, Public?
Basically, the parameters of the current formula for Chapter 70 is fly significantly.
We're gonna fix it?
We have pushed, and I just got an information.
I know you have been pushed.
We have now 40 senators who have signed on to the commission to make these adjustments, because it is, there's 232, okay, cities, towns, and regions, who are getting zero in Chapter 78, zero.
We're one of them.
Yeah.
And they've been one of them for almost 20 years. And so, the gateway cities, Lowell, Lawrence, Hable, Worcester, okay, they're rolling, they're not rolling in money, but compared to us, they're rolling in money. And so, there's no question that the rural school aid came out of that need. It was 319 school districts, 234, zero. And some of the new zero people are Acton, Foxborough.
Really?
Okay, they're like in shock. Acton, Acton, Foxborough, that's the one where they died. So, with that being said, and we're pushing legislation, and Quavon, you guys did a great job working with the senators and reps, and we had a whole performance of the kids, they did a wonderful, they did a wonderful job talking with the senators and representatives about schools. And so, we have 40 signs up, we will pass that amendment, okay?
Maureen, do you know if our senator is on that committee, or?
Our senator is not.
Oh.
Senator Rand is not.
That's interesting, yes.
He did not sign off, I thought you told me he was.
Oh, you mean, did he sign as a supporter?
Is he in favor of it? Let's put it that way.
I would have to look, because our representative, for example, told us that he would, what he always voted for was transportation. Guess who voted against regional school transportation reimbursement increases? Our representative. I look at this stuff, and I say, "Well, that's interesting." And I'm sure there's a reason, but I, we didn't take it. But I would just tell you that our senator, we haven't seen before he's signed on. So, maybe he did sign on, so I'm gonna be happy if he did.
I reached out to him as multiple times, and last he confirmed with me that he would be a supporter.
I was suspecting he would be a supporter for the prime reason. He has the largest regional school district in the Commonwealth, okay? Just watch who said, "He has us, he has Okebog, I think he has Narragansett, and he may even have Ashwath." And he has Ashwath.
That's good, that's good, thank you.
So, if he doesn't sign on, like, must he just, you know, say it to himself, "I don't care to be elected yet," is my guess.
And that's to revamp Chapter 70?
That is to look at Chapter 70 and revamp it to address the needs of the 234 school districts who are getting no Chapter 78. They have to split, right now, the state says, "We're gonna pay 49% of the education cost." That's the state. And new towns are gonna pay 51%. No, 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 wrong split, it should be the other way. And the fixes are actually easier than they make them appear. They're not politically easy. They're not politically, but it doesn't matter how rich a town and city in town is. They will get 17% of, okay? Doesn't matter how rich they are, except for all the schools who have declining enrollments, okay? And they get zero.
And that, hopefully that'll eliminate hold harmless as well, is that the goal?
Well, over time, that would have to, that would handle harmless, because that's the problem.
Anyway.
Be nice if the state kicked in, Maureen.
I'm sorry?
It'd be nice if the state kicked in, you know, the, the.
I actually, Stacy and I sat on a webinar, and it was after the House meeting, after the budget, but we got the impression, and you can imagine this in your seats as well, right? The federal government is reducing funding all around. We see that, we know some of our entitlement grants have been cut altogether, to be honest with you. We lost $88,000 in funding in our Title II and Title IV grants. Our Title I is level-funded, which is really bad. It's a, you know, it's a decrease for us. But basically, what we heard was the state is also very cautious, and they're, they're playing a waiting game right now, which probably wasn't the appropriate time, but I said, "Well, then, you know, tell me what we should do, because we have five towns. We've gotta get our budget through, and we have to open school at the end of August, right? And there's no easy process for that." So anyways, we'll see what comes of it, but that's why we felt we needed to reduce the budget number to you, so that hopefully we made it a little bit more favorable. I know, I know you also have your own challenges, so I don't wanna downplay that. But we tried to give it every effort to see if we could get this budget through for our towns.
Appreciate it.
How is enrollment, enrollment still on the decline, or is it beginning to level off, or?
No, and it's projected to keep declining, to be honest with you. We've had studies from NESDEC, and we are anticipating declining enrollment for a while.
It's declining across the country, across the nation.
It's birth rates.
The birth rates are very low, but they're the lowest in American history as far as, you know, per capita, how many children are being born any given year. Very, very low, and, you know, it's a little bit like nervous, you know? And I would say that your Quavon had a space of 300,000 kids, and that was, okay, now it's, what, 80,000?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Do you guys have like a full, long copy of the proposal that you could email over?
Sure, yeah.
Also online, you can get it online.
Yeah, we got the, I think, is it Jessica?
Yes.
She normally sends over the subcommittee proposals, budgets. Do you get those?
Uh, I don't know, I'll have to look.
It's usually over the email, so.
We're happy to resend it, it's also on our website, they'll resend it sometimes, but this is easy.
Lots of good info. I, you know, from my perspective, I appreciate, you know, having the best of your ability to have a good assessment number, you know, because that helps, you know? And I know that the assessment's come down a little bit, so, and the work that the district has done to try to mitigate the burden through the towns, and it's a, it's a challenge, because, you know, obviously, we need the youth to be educated, and educated well with the services, so that way someday they can sit in these seats, right?
Yes. Yes.
And, so, yeah. It is important, it's, it's challenging for rural communities like ours, so, I appreciate it. We all, we all appreciate it.
We do not have these, because, oh, how wonderful is that?
That's gonna be a first.
Well, we, and I'll tell you, we talked about, so, just a couple things of note, right now, lunches are not fully funded, so that's something that, you know, is on our radar. If that does not come to fruition, we are going to have to charge students for lunches again. We really talked along and heard in our team about how could we increase revenue to help offset this budget. One of the first conversations that came up was athletic fees. And the school committee was pretty loud and clear on this, that times are tough for everybody right now, and if we could do something instead of charging athletic fees, they would be in favor of that, and therefore we reduced the uniforms instead of charging athletic fees. So we have looked at a lot of different avenues, but are trying to make decisions that, you know, not only is this on the backs of our towns, but it's, it's also, you know, families are struggling right now with all of the increased costs and so on and so forth, so we're just being mindful as best we can to, to see where we can hopefully get through until we fix this formula, which we feel will happen.
Barry is a Title I school.
Barry and Hardwood, and our middle school now are all school-wide Title I schools, which means that they have some additional services in them, and if you have students in levels.
But that's a federal.
It is, it's frankly funded, and it's based on your demographics, on.
How about IDEA, the Big Special Agreed from the Biz?
See, we haven't heard anything on that just yet.
But that Title I you said was level funded, right?
Yes.
So that's better, because then Title Two and Four had a reduction.
Completely cut, not reduction.
Eighty-eight thousand?
Gone away, you don't need that anymore.
Yeah. Well, millionaires need to cut.
Yeah, absolutely. And that, that was honestly something that was to support our English Northern population. Much of it was for professional development. Some of it was for use of technology, digital literacy, STEM education, places like that.
And the lunch programs at the school, even when you charge, that's, that's a self-funded program, that's separate from the budget?
Yes, yep, it is. They're fully sustaining, they pay their own employees, and.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for your time and presentation, we certainly appreciate it.
For having us. We do also, I just wanna mention it, because hopefully people find them helpful, but we do these municipal meetings quarterly, where Jessica Bennett sends out an invitation to your select board, your FinCon. We've had a really good response, so we do have a lot of towns coming, even if you can't make it every month, but you send one rep, we encourage you to do that. We're gonna start to plan the, we're already planning for next year, a presentation around chapter seventy that Stacy and I recently attended, and we kinda walked away. Maureen would probably be like, this is what we're at, but we were like, oh, okay, we learned something new. So we will be sure to invite you to that, but I feel like, hopefully, the folks who have attended that along the way have felt like we've really tried to communicate each step of the budget process and where we were, and here from the towns, it's a two-way street. You know, we hear, this is what we're struggling with, we're struggling with police fire, you know, all those things. Maybe it helps to commiserate, I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, no, I do see the invites, of course, for me personally, it's always like the wrong, sometimes it's the same night we meet here.
Well, maybe what we'll do is we'll send out, at the end of the year, we're gonna do a little survey, and we'll send out what's a good night, and maybe we can choose a different night.
Sure, I can figure something out, I got somebody, you know, get out there. We appreciate the communication.
Well, thank you so much, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you. That's right, yeah. Take care.
And, so that is it for FY twenty-six, departments presenting. I know we had a couple departments that did not present, but we got their budgets level funded. And I think now we move into the joint meeting budget development part.
I'm sorry? We were talking about the planning wooden gravel.
Oh, okay. Did you wanna go into the whole conversation on the budget development?
What I would recommend after spending some time with Greg this afternoon, and he and I working with what numbers we have, we believe we have quite a bit of work to do, obviously, to get the budget where you want it to be within the next couple of weeks, and where we need it to be for, obviously, for you to look at, and to look at, you know, our recommendations, and understanding that, or having other people understand, we say a level funded budget, some people think you just go in and you level fund every line item, they scare that. No, you take the bottom number, the bottom number is ten thousand dollars, you say, that's all we can spend, and then you find out, oh my gosh, health insurance went up eleven percent, oh my god.
Ex cost.
Oil deliveries for all of our town, we, buildings went up X percent. So then you, then you say, oh, what, what can't we control? We can't control these, so then we have to take that delta, which is, okay, let's make this five thousand dollars out of a dent, I have to go over there and cut five thousand dollars of stuff and services that people want. And then, okay, so we need to put together for you a level, okay, funded budget, and then we need to put together for you an accurate level services budget, where we go into the contract and we say, Maureen Marshall is on step two, she's gonna go on step three, because we can't not pay people who are contracted, okay? So we pay that stuff off, we try to do a minimum COLA or something for people, okay, because we don't have a lot of employees, but anyway, we have to, we have to do all of that. And then we say, okay, and we add the health insurance, the, you know, I think, what did you say, Worcester County Retirement is a huge increase of a hundred thousand dollars?
It's big.
Yeah, it's big.
County Retirement was up, hang on, Maureen, eighteen point six one percent.
So we, so we take all that stuff.
About a hundred and ten thousand.
And so we say, we have a level funded budget, and we have a level services budget. And then we say, okay, what's, what's that delta? And that delta would be, okay, if necessary, it's either an override, or you do the level funded, and you take away services and people from the unit.
We have any idea right now what the delta might be? A guess?
I don't, I, I don't, but I believe with Greg and I working together.
In a week?
Interfacing, I mean, I could come up with a number, but I'm in fantasy right now, but we can give you a real number within a reasonable amount of time, and a real recommendation for do this, do this, here's, here's the delta, and then we say, well, we'll do, we won't go as far as a level funded budget, or, then we, we look at the delta, if we want to maintain the exact service delivery pattern we have now, we can figure that out, what is going to cost.
So, yeah, so just to kinda continue what Maureen said, there's some, there's some budget drivers for the next fiscal year, health insurance is up eleven point three two percent, I'm sure you've heard that number before, but it equates.
It's about four percent?
It equates to almost sixty thousand dollars. County, County Retirement is up eighteen point six one percent, about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. As the school superintendent pointed out, those are the kind of numbers that we take off the top, they're not negotiable. Medicare, looks as though we pay Medicare tax, it looks as though we have about a four thousand dollar deficit for the current fiscal year, so the next fiscal year will be the four thousand dollars plus any growth in salaries and wages, needs to be added to that. And those are kind of our, our main budget drivers at this point. The, the other thing to take into account is we have additional exempt debt, so the fire truck was voted back in April at the ballot to be exempt, it's not on the debt service schedule, it doesn't mean we have more money to spend, it's just from a accounting perspective, we need to be able to show the revenue and the expense both on our recap sheet, so that there's not an issue in setting the tax rate. And then, I think the, the concern that I have is about the town administrative position. Salary is really low, and, and my concern is attracting a quality candidate. It's currently, at FY twenty-six request, was ninety-four thousand five fifty-six. It was approved back a couple of years ago, a hundred and three thousand. I feel both those numbers are low, and I, I've done kind of a quick analysis, and it's low. There's no doubt, if any doubts about that, so just kinda keep in mind that that number may, may go up as time goes on, the position's been advertised, it's been posted, you'll see it on Facebook, it's out there, it's been advertised in the MMA bulletin. We kept the salary range as the selectmen approved commensurate with their experience, so we didn't put a dollar mouth in there, but we do need to be cognizant of that.
My concern is it's the twentieth of May. We don't have anything to present on the budget from any department.
Well, we do have a budget from every department. Every department presented a budget.
Maybe I don't get copied on all the emails.
We don't have, well, it's what we've been doing this whole cycle.
Yeah, I, I emailed you a couple weeks ago asking for some additional budgets that I happen to have copied on, and I haven't received one.
I don't know, we, every department has presented their budget, we don't have the town administrator recommendations.
That's the missing piece.
That's the missing piece.
That's obviously what Greg, what Greg and I will be working on.
So, I, I mean, Greg's talking about, and you're talking about, things that are out of our control, but we have stuff that's in our control, that we're going outside of parameters on. We're giving out nineteen percent increases in the police department under two big salaries. We're giving out other big increases, like, we throw the override word around very lightly, like, what are we gonna do?
I don't throw it on lightly, I think, I, I, you have to, you have to look at the fact that in order to, to be attract or to keep a high-quality police chief across your mind, to, to have any kind of, you know, fire and ambulance circumstance that we're negotiating now, we have to have paramedics if we wanna have an advanced life support system. If we don't pay paramedics, okay, at least in the, in the midline, we're not gonna have any paramedics, and so that makes a difference for our community. I think, okay, the selectmen's job and the town administrator's job is to bring information to the people who will then vote. I don't get to, I get one vote, one my hand up, just like you, and, and to get the best information, we have, from the last warrant that we just, you know, signed and processed, we go through that, and we say, where have we got a little extra, you know, where are we, where are we underwater, what are our issues? We know that we have to explain where we're underwater and why, there are not a lot of underwater places at all, but we have to, we have to, and so that's where we know, okay, was last year's budget, okay, did we make it, and so, so on and so forth, and where are our new budget drivers, and he's talked about a few of them. And we have an obligation, in my opinion, and it's only my opinion, to say, okay, to go through all of the information, and Cory, I am very willing to sit down with you and in hand, if we need to, and go through every single lineup, go through every single thing that we are thinking about and talking about. I don't have any secrets from you or anybody else's, the budget, the budget, and you have been helpful to me in a number of conversations that we've had about, you know, language to go with contracts, that would be helpful to the town and help hopefully the employee. You and I have shared that information, I have been always helping, I appreciated your help and counsel. So my, I, my job isn't to say, oh, yeah, I don't care, I think we should have an override. No, my job is as a person to say, here's, here's what you do if you want this level of service, here's how we'll vote if you want, if you're saying, I can't do anymore, Maureen, I'm sorry, I don't care if we have the advanced system, you know, ambulance system, I don't care if our library is open, those are votes people can take. I think we have to say, this is what it costs to do at least what we're doing now, and when you come in with a four, a little over four percent increase in schools, and you're already paying sixty-eight million dollars, I mean, six hundred and eighty million dollars, you don't have to be Einstein to say, that's a problem. It's not a problem we're gonna fix, because we're gonna be one of the five towns, and if the other four towns vote, we owe them, we owe the budget. So, that being said, I would tell you that, in my opinion, there is no way under God's green earth that you will have a budget, okay, that you will want to present to the town, destroying everything we've ever done, so we never have to do an override. I think we should be very prudent about what that override might look like, and have a plan maybe for digging ourselves out of this grave, but unless and until we see what the state's gonna do versus what this, what the federal will, we are, I mean, it is one of those years that we can't be totally dependent on the, the state will come through, or the feds will come through. And so I, I think our job, working with, and I, and I know it's hard, because we don't have a town administrator, and so you're stuck with the selectmen, and thankfully, Mr. Val, who will work through the numbers, and Cory, I will sit down with you anytime you want, we'll look at recommendations, and I have no hesitation with any one of you wanting to sit down with me and have a conversation. If you say, Maureen, you think you're absolutely crazy, I will say, that's okay, I will be happy to get up on the town meeting floor and defend my position. Trust me on that. I will not sit there and say, well, Maureen doesn't have anything to say, I will have something to say. It might not be anything you agree with, but I think it's important to know that I care deeply about this job. And when Kathy in and told me, no problem, Maureen, four, five hours a week, that's all it takes, you can run and you still have time to live. It's, it's different, I have, you know, a lot more responsibilities than, than Richard does, and than we ever thought we were gonna have. But I will, I will tell you, I will not excuse mistakes, I will not make up stuff, and I will take responsibility for what people don't run here. That's, 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 in my opinion, that's my job. You get to leave town after we do what we do, and I get to stay, and I have a lot of faith and confidence in the people of Barry, I really do, where it really comes down to it. I really think that, you know, it's not gonna be easy, it's gonna be hard, and for some people, you know, tax bills are, are gonna be, you know, as Cory says, they're stressful in some people, we know that, and doing the best job we can to, you know, put a budget together that, you know, is not gonna ask for the world, but it's gonna at least set us up to have the kind of services our people deserve and need, and we can't not have, we cannot be hardware in paying somebody a fee to run our ambulance system we don't have any. That's hard. We cannot be, right, right now, you know, I think that, from a fire perspective, quite frankly, it is called mutual aid, and we're mutual aid. We're a big mutual aid to the, to the towns that surround us, they don't have the capacity that we have, and I know that.
We're losing.
And I know that you, Richard, met with OCAM about them wanting maybe to get together with us and do some collaboration on fire, fire stuff, right?
Multi-tone.
Yeah, so, I mean, we know we, we have to do more collaborative things, we know that there are community home pack grants that are available to us, to, the state will pay us to, you know, get down and dirty and get people in here who can give us some really good ideas about how we can be more cost-effective by being, you know, not having our own school system, having our own fire department, and having a much more collaborative approach to managing our, you know, our services for people. We know we have water issues, water problems, I'm not gonna hide behind that, and if you really wanna know all about it, I'll happily talk with you, like, the sewer project is going well, we're pretty much wrapping that up, we have the grants for that, but we have some issues. It's, you know, we have, we have wells and pumping strategies and, and, you know, treatment strategies that are old and corroded and not pumping, we're fixing those. The thing is, is we know, whereas we fix those and get better at it, probably, we're gonna have higher rates for water and sewer, and that's gonna be really hard for people, because that's a tax. And we have been much better at, at actually having our meters that work. You know, we've had a hundred and thirty meters that we haven't been able to reach for quite a while, that's a lot of water. So, I mean, we're doing those kinds of things, because we have to rein those enterprise accounts in so that they're really, you know, flush, and that people don't have, have an increased water and sewer rates. Think about the fact that we have a well that's pushing, okay, it's the lowest, it's in the lowest part, okay, topography, pushing against, okay, what, how many hundred thousands of feet to get to my house? If you can believe it, now, I don't have a ton of water, but insight meditation does. Think about that, think about the push to get water, and we had the pipes, I mean, the pumps will work in twenty-four seven, never stopped. So we've been working, we've found, I don't know how many huge leaks, and so now we have, the pumps are actually off for X number of hours a day, okay, during the night hours. So we had huge water leaks we found, not leak, like I'm off the on a truck, that happened down. So I, I couldn't, you know, thank the water, the new water department people we have, the company that we hired to sort of, they've done tremendous work for us. And so we, we've had problems, towns always have problems, but I would tell you, our problems is, we can resolve them, and we can, I, I hope, if, if there is an override, and, and one we can defend, I will certainly stand up and defend it, even if you don't want it, and I will say, I think we should at least give the chance to the public to vote, and we could lose it, you know, and we could be back, could do things in the community that we don't wanna do, saying we're not gonna do this anymore, we're not gonna do that anymore, and so on, so, and what we can't do is once the other four towns vote that school budget, that's a big. And what we can't do is once the other four towns vote that school budget, that's a big chunk of change, but we're not gonna be able to get at it, we're just not. And we're not gonna be able to get at, you know, Medicare and retirement because that's, we're not gonna be able to do anything with those. So, I say to you, it's, I, I do not talk about an override, you know, I hope in a irresponsible way. I think I'm responsible to tell you the truth.
Yeah, present the truth to the taxpayer. It's ultimately fair to say.
Yeah, I mean, I already go in there.
You took advantage of person as well.
Sounds like all of you, you sit there and you do all this work and you just go and vote. You know, it's how we.
And it's not a surprise that we're here, like, back when Jessica was here, we said, this is, what's happening now with the levy limitations, it's not sustainable, with wages, bringing the town up to paying a respectable wage for the folks who do commit their time to work here. Right, that's a big part of it. And additionally, the increase of unexpectedly fuel, electricity, all the utilities that come into play. You know, there, there was whispers of an override years ago and we've actually done a very good job. Like, we could have, we could have easily had an override last year, instead we cut the budget very creatively and with a special town meeting by three hundred thousand dollars. So, we have to think about, you know, you have the a hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase just between retirement and health insurance, right? Plus the three hundred thousand just to get the same positions we had in FY twenty-four. So like what Dr. Marshall was saying, you know, level funded versus level services, our delta's gonna be north of a half million dollars.
Oh, absolutely.
And probably closer to a million, and I, I don't know if anyone read the Gazette, but I know our neighbor over here, North Brookfield, is facing a similar problem with a one and a half million dollar deficit. And it's not uncommon right now, there are a slew of towns in the same exact situation because the costs are just outpacing the revenues. And even the revenue report we received a couple of weeks ago, if you look, and you project out, like, the revenues are probably gonna come in under a projection, well, we, we anticipated for this fiscal year. So there, that's another challenge on top of our expenses. And we don't have a gluttonous government. You know, like, it, it, we don't have parks and recreation, we don't have places where we can just go and shop, like, we have... You know, Dr. Marshall, Greg and I were talking about it, it was like, you see the TA consistently turned over. You, the TA assistant, we have one, we have essentially two people managing the entire community, right? That's it. And burnout's a real thing, it's a real challenge, right? And there's all sorts of stuff getting thrown at them, right? And it's hard to get out of their own way. You know, if, if really, like, we should have, to Greg's point, to try to get someone in here, be like, to deal with that level of stress and that burden, they should get paid more, right? With a police chief or a fire chief, you know, they should, we don't up their salary to a reasonable salary. We're just gonna, they're gonna flip and then we're gonna have to hire somebody else and start the whole process over.
But, I understand that, I, I tell my union members when I'm negotiating a contract, you can't bleed them dry on one contract. You, you gotta get a little bit at a time. Nineteen percent increases are pretty unrealistic, you know, and I keep hearing, you don't wanna lose them. Is, is that the threat, are they gonna go without a nineteen percent increase? That's a twenty thousand dollar increase. If I'm a town administrator coming into the town, I'm not coming in for less than what the police chief is getting paid. It's just not gonna happen, so now we're gonna pay the town administrator an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. You bring them up over one-twenty. Now, you know, the justification is, well, we're not gonna get a police car this year, which makes Sam happy, but next year they're gonna come for a police car. So now, the two nineteen percent increases on top of the two and a half cola.
And that's the perpetual situation that we're, we're gonna be in and it's...
We're also not buying the cruiser.
Yeah, but you're gonna buy it next year.
Wait a minute, we're not, we're not filling a full-time police position this year. And we're not filling James D. Jolio's former full-time position this year.
Do we need twelve full-time police officers for a town of five thousand people?
We have eleven, I think it's gonna be reduced to ten.
Well, you know, interesting thing, I, I couldn't agree with you more about the question, Cory. And so, I went to the selectmen and hired them, and I say, okay, tell me about your police department. I said, you got twenty-four seven, two people on every shift, absolutely. I was like shocked, I said, wow, because I thought it was gonna be a big number. And I said, really? And so I said, how many vehicles you got? And he says, nine.
But they got Harvard money.
I'm sorry?
They got Harvard money, they're in four ninety-five, like, it's a whole different.
Hard work.
A hard wit.
Hard work.
Hard work in the region.
Or if it were Harvard, yeah, I'd agree with you.
Hard work in the region, maybe shit.
Yeah, I appreciate you, my guy, yeah.
They got twenty.
Okay, so, same, the same situation, not in Hubbardson. Hubbardson does not have a, what I would call third shift, okay, that's sort of an on-call thing. North Brookfield calls dispatch and they dispatch out of the academy, police department out of the academy. The academy does not look forward to be thinking that everybody around them can do that. So, that's not an option. Certainly, you, you, you look at what they're paying and they're paying more than we've paid sub- or in three years. I mean, so, he's been underpaid relative to, but I, I agree with you, I hear what you're saying, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, seems like a ton of money, but...
I, I don't think it seems like a ton of money, it seems like a...
The increase, the increase.
Well, you, you look at Paxton in terms of demographics, very similar to our town, I think they play their police chief at one ninety.
Oh, literally.
And, yeah, well, that's what was posted in the Telegram, I think.
Cory, I know that you did a little bit of...
The only differences is they're a little closer west than the property values.
Yeah, property, yeah.
They make a lot.
Yeah, yeah, but tell them what they're making.
So, I know what they made.
So, I did a, I did a quick back of the envelope today because I wanted to come into the meeting because I saw that the budget amount for the town administrator was current year's ninety-two, two fifty. So I just did a quick check. Towns that I think are kinda comparable to us, Amenden, one hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred. Sutton, Sutton, one hundred and ninety thousand.
Big property.
Ashburnham, one hundred and forty thousand.
But look at all of those towns and look at how much, uh, uh, look at their revenue sources, it's not all property tax. They got, they got commercial revenue, like...
Sutton, not, 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 not. Ashburnham hasn't, that's a...
Ashburnham's got nothing.
That's right, Ashburnham.
The school, that's it.
You're right on that.
School.
Uh, Clinton, one hundred and seventy thousand.
They got a lot of commercial property.
You know, I mean, I could go on, there's some, some bigger towns, but those are just the ones that I consider to be in the same... Littleton, looking for an assistant, assistant, not the current, one fourteen, four to one forty-nine, three.
They have so much industrial, so much tech.
You have Wes Wilson on there, right?
Wes Wilson, one forty, plus.
Plus they're looking.
Sheffield, Littleton or Sheffield, two thousand people, one oh five, plus.
Yeah. I think Hubbardson's up at like one ten, one twelve.
I mean, like I said, I'm, I'm just concerned, we, we'll advertise and we're out there, but I just realistically need to set everyone's expectations that when you've got those markets and you're competing and we're at, you know, ninety-four, we previously budgeted one oh three a couple of years ago, it's, it's tough to find the right candidate, the person that's gonna stick here and have the ability to kinda deal with the, the issues that are going on in the community.
We can't afford to get it wrong again.
That's right.
How about you on that? You, you and I are on the same page and, and hopefully we all can kinda come to the reality.
We can't afford to get what again?
You can't, you can't, you can't afford to have a turnover every eighteen months.
No.
Well, you gotta turn over every eighteen months.
Can we have it?
In another eighteen months, hopefully I'll be in Arizona or in Florida.
You said that eighteen months ago.
Just have them serious. But, um, yeah, it's, it, I just also wanted, before we, while we're on the budget, bring up FY twenty-five. Because I looked at FY twenty-five and for the most part, they're not bad. But there are two things that are kinda out there that are outliers and are things of concern that we have to address going into town meeting, so will affect money. Snow deficit. So we have a snow deficit of two hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars. This is not gonna get any bigger, but it's a huge number.
Huge number.
Yeah.
And a hundred and plus thousand of it is a salt shed full of salt because when we were ordering salt...
Yeah, I couldn't get it.
We couldn't get it. And we had ordered it from, because we ordered it through the state business. So, we ended up ordering it and they couldn't deliver, so, they delivered it, you know, after the snow scene, which is okay because we have access to it for next year, but that doesn't make our conversation with the, with the public at the beginning of the town meeting about, you know, what else.
And we're gonna have to drill down and with a number that size, see what expenditures comprise that total.
And we'll have that.
Because everyone, everyone needs to know what that is, yeah. We'll need to, we'll need to drill down and see what it is.
Last year was ten thousand, right, for the overage, the year before was four and the year before was one oh nine. Now we're two oh eight, we're more than two oh eight in the factor in the overtime, we're like two thirty.
No, no, two oh eight includes the overtime, yeah, it does. And the, and the other one that is in a deficit is town buildings. So that was one of the ones that was cut back in the fall.
Yeah.
And so we're negative six thousand, eight hundred fifty, unlike snow and ice that will have some small activity going forward. We should be able to, we should be able to cover that and there's, the other accounts that are in deficit, there's a police overtime, which is about three thousand, over three thousand dollars. And, and Medicare, as you mentioned before, is not in deficit today, but I project, if you project it out, it's gonna be in about a four thousand dollars. Those ones should be able to be taken care of with end of year transfers. However, the snow deficit will require action at town meeting because the alternative is taking that and carrying that deficit forward into the next fiscal year and then you start the new fiscal year behind by two hundred and eight thousand dollars. You don't wanna do that. You wanna be able to solve that, that deficit in this fiscal year. So, there will be, there will be some work that's required going forward in terms of how we care of that.
I think just you and I spending some time, you know, on this budget, which we have, we kind of have, we have a plan that we'll be able to deliver it to you within a reasonable amount of time, very specific. It's gonna look like you're at the town meeting. And there it is, yeah, FY twenty-five, okay, expended to date, blah, 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 and then it's gonna say what, what maybe was requested, what we're gonna be recommending. And, and I, I'm undermined that we should do a level funded budget, which will give you what we lose if we go in that direction. And then the, if we remain current service delivery patterns, that gives you the delta between what is now. It's not adding a lot, anything, it's just fixing us to what we do now. Hopefully we'll go there less snow and ice in the next round. Because the budget is not, your current budget is meeting our needs, right? Primarily, snow and ice was, was an issue, but I would say that we did take eighty thousand dollars out of DPW to balance the budget and we're okay, and we're still okay in that, in that budget. We're okay in the fire department where we took a chunk of the chief's salary because we're not replacing, okay, the fire inspector at this point in time. So, I thi, I think we're okay, we, we should end up with maybe free cash, we've got a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of free cash from FY twenty-five.
Right.
That's a lot, trust me it isn't, but it's, it's, it's something, we've got about eighty, eight hundred, eight hundred and thirty or forty thousand dollars in stabilization, we're only eight hundred thousand dollars in stabilization.
One, uh, one, uh, eight forty-three, two twenty-five in stabilization, one sixty-eight, two thirty in free cash.
What's the, what's a capital stabilization?
Two fifty, four eighty-one.
So, I mean, it's not like, you know, I mean, I've seen worse.
I, I did wanna say on the, on the overtime, looking at the police department budget, he's running surpluses in his other areas, so it may not even become an issue, but you just need to be aware of the fact that the overtime is slightly in the red. But again, he's, he's not spending other portions of his budget, so they offset each other.
So, so anyway, I guess what, what we, we see is, we're saying, yeah, go and do that or if you want us to go and do something else, let us know. Otherwise we do a level funded, we do level services.
Yeah, yeah.
We add, you know, if the poll is, or what's that. And then we say, use the amount of money in between, what's your plan? Because I think we have to have a coordinated plan and if we're gonna go for an override, what is the amount of money? And determine what to ask for. And then we need, there's, there's a lot of nuance to putting together the override vote and all that.
Well, you're gonna need to have a, a plan B too, you're gonna have to explain that to the people that vote against the override, that this is what's gonna happen, we're gonna have to cut three, five...
But understanding the delta.
Yeah, no, no, you're right, I agree with what you have.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, I have this triangle and I said, this is the delta, know this, know this, know this. Blessing bowers on this, know this, know this, know this.
Yeah.
And, and, and most people will say, she's exaggerating and it's a lie. No, I, no, I've been there, done that, you know, a hundred times. And, um, that's okay, okay, and I would hate to ever have to demonstrate that I was right. I know, because you don't want that to happen. You want, you want the belief to be, okay, we can trust this group of people, they never come to me, they've never asked for food, ever. Who, ever. The only thing they've ever done is tell me, pay people more, Maureen, because nobody wants to work here. And so we pay people more and yeah, now we, we get to hire some people, we get to steal somebody from, in the water department, which has been a really great hire for us. We get to steal somebody from the department over Spencer, a nice young man and a wonderful mechanic. And before, we were advertising, you know, next to no money, we got nothing, we didn't get applicants. And so now we have, you know, some really fine people who've joined our, you know, staff and that's, that's great for us. And I, and I agree, I think, to Cory, who said, we can't screw up at the TA, the town administrator position. And I can't take his responsibility.
And we can't afford to get it wrong.
Okay, I think that's much nicer.
I'm sure I did screw up.
Sam, you got a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I came with, from the last meeting, this last selectmen's meeting, there was a discussion about a fire truck that hasn't been made, that still hasn't gotten on the assembly line, that we're committed to and maybe we're not committed to, maybe we need, that's, that's just hanging over our head, I see you smiling. It's hanging over everybody's head.
It just takes a long time to settle these things. You can't just say overnight, we got this...
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying we have some thinking to do in that regard.
Oh, we know that, yeah.
And, and I think that's an opportunity to get one thing off our backs because this is gonna be on our backs for multiple years. Is that correct?
Yep.
So you don't have to... Seven years, but it is, it is, it is now dead excluded, so it's not, it's not a...
It's a fire truck.
Operating expense.
Just another thing that we might be able to rid ourselves with.
I think that was discussed.
Because from what I'm understanding, that it was supposed to have been delivered this month.
Well, the first payment for the lease agreement.
First payment, the lease agreement is due...
It's June first.
Ready yet.
Right, but the truck is not ready, so the, the other side has, has not completed their part of the contract. There might be an opening to say, let's talk.
You ever read the fine print about a lease agreement, I'm sure...
No, I haven't, I haven't.
I have a copy of it.
This is the lease agreement you just sent us, right?
Maybe other people have, and maybe there's an opening, maybe, maybe all of a sudden they have someone else in Colorado that wants that, that we can put together, it's worth talking about.
Well, I think, I think we got it.
It's worth talking about, but I'm not the legal expert here, it's the town that voted to approve the fund, the fire truck.
Probably twice, is that the three hundred and one?
Yeah, so, I, I'm not, I'm not sure the legality, I mean, it's a great comment, but I'm not sure the legalities of the town.
I don't know what they voted on, but I think there was a consensus in the town that the fire truck and trucks, which we had, once we didn't have any, now we have two all of a sudden, were, were obtained by some sort of sleight of hand process.
I wouldn't take a consensus, I would say...
Well, I mean, it went, it was on the floor of the town meeting.
That's not a sleight of hand.
I'm not saying you, I'm not pointing your finger.
No, you're saying it not, statement that isn't true.
I'm not pointing, pointing any fingers, I'm just saying that I remember that you got up and said, we can't afford the truck, we don't need the truck, don't vote for me.
Well, I, I just said we couldn't afford it.
It's excluded.
I said, we couldn't afford it.
What you said.
I said, it's gonna lead to financial risk for the town in the future.
And you guys in the finance committee, and anybody should have realized, maybe what you're gonna do, as I said before, you're gonna get up on the desk and say, folks, we're not screwing around, we're really serious about this, don't do this. Well, however, so, so I'm saying that, we're getting past the point, I'm saying that. From what, I didn't see the contract, I didn't see the finance committee, I imagine you want...
So wasting time, talking about it.
The truck was supposed to have been, from what I heard the other night... The truck was supposed to have been, from what I heard the other night, was supposed to have been delivered by the end of June.
We were hoping it was gonna deliver next fiscal year.
Right, by the end of June. It's not ready, it's not on the assembly line. It's, they, they have a certain percentage of contract issues that they did not deliver on. I think it's a, it, it's an opportunity to say...
I don't think it's an opportunity, though, and I'm gonna cut you off there, Sam, only because...
You can't cut me off, go right ahead.
The town voted for, the, the townspeople at town meeting voted for it. And, look, I wish we didn't vote for it, you know?
The towns, the townspeople...
And we, we've dead-excluded it, so it's...
The townspeople have been and were misled for very...
That's, that's, it does...
For various, it's time to be...
Sam...
I'm just saying...
All right, we have a point of whether...
Let's not, let's not avoid paying attention to that opportunity.
Well, I, I'm not sure if there is an opportunity, or I, I, like I said, I'm not an expert in that matter, but I, I, I think, um, it's...
I said what I needed to say.
It, it might take a, a leap of faith, but in terms of the operating budget, what we're here to discuss, the fire truck is not really part of that, right, because we dead-excluded it as a town. So, that's not gonna impact our, our operating budget at all. So, whether we accept that truck or don't accept that truck, that doesn't matter to this committee here at this point, because it's, it's beyond our operating budget. You know? Um, now, in the terms of the overall tax rate, it doesn't impact tax rate, right? Uh, and obviously, we wanna keep that. But what we, I do wanna just make a point on Dr. Marshall. I, I really like the idea, and it makes sense to me, if everyone's on board, to have the, the level service budget and the level funded budget, and, 'cause the level funded budget, again, just to reiterate things that we talked about tonight and that we've gone through in the past fiscal year, um, level funded would be, like, already removing the positions that we, we moved back at the special town meeting, right? And then bringing it up so we're within the, the levy limit of the two-and-a-half. And with the increases of, uh, retirement and healthcare...
In schools.
In schools, right? That doesn't even include, like, you know, the wish lists from, you know, the police department, the town administration, right, to try to bring in a, a second part-time person, which personally, I believe that department needs. Um, and because, you know, Sandy, God bless her, like, uh, she, she does much more than I would probably do in that role, that's for darn sure. And, you know, we're putting our people, the townspeople, on a top spot, so we gotta explain it to the voters, like, hey, look at, this is where we're at. And if you like the services we have, if you like, if you pick up the phone and the fire department shows up, and the imminent shows up, or your route, your road is plowed in, uh, in, when it's negative thirty degrees out, then level funded may not be the option for you. You know, you might have to open up your wallet a little bit. And that's what, that's really what the discussion's gonna come down to for the voters that show up at town meeting and potentially at the ballot box, you know, if we, we go that route.
And one thing, there's all kinds of, you know, parameters for if you are gonna do a ballot election. There's X number of days to do this, X number of days to do that, X number of days, X number of days. And, and, you know, is it gonna be a menu, is it gonna be just a blank, blank, this much, and this is what it would be used to fund? Um, then, then, and everything has to be racked up by September fifteenth. Okay, so, doing it, this, you know, having town meeting, the dates that we're having, who knows, it's gonna be a summer ballot. And a summer ballot is nothing school people ever want, right? 'Cause that's when the folks are not focused on anything that's happening in schools, and they, so they don't even vote. And we need people to show up and vote and do, uh, their due diligence, so we know what they support and what they don't. Um, so, I think Greg and I are, are, are ready to roll and provide the background information that you need.
Will we be able to get that by the next meeting?
Well, we're gonna have to set up our, our next meeting.
You're not gonna be able to get it in a week.
No, but...
It's gonna take us with more time than that.
We're gonna need at least...
When's town meeting, the twenty-fourth?
The twenty-fourth. And next week's the holiday, so, you know, and I, I'm gonna help Dr. Marshall and Greg along with that process as well, as much as I can. But I, you know, my suggestion is for the committee to meet again on the third, um, of June. And then we also have to prepare for our public hearing, which we traditionally have done it two weeks before, but we might have to do it on the seventeenth, if we wanna stick with Tuesday, or we can look at a different, different day, um, the week of the tenth, I don't, I'm not quite sure on that. I'm unavailable the week of the tenth, uh, the, the day of the tenth.
Couple of weeks ago, you had recommended that we were gonna give a, a say on each individual department versus the overall budget. Were we gonna do that?
Yeah, we can make, we're gonna do the recommendations, but the, the challenge that we're running into is the town administrator's role, like, we're missing documents that we've been asking for. With the exit of Tammy, um, I wasn't aware of that. I knew, I thought she was leaving in June, but I wasn't aware of that, it was gonna be an early exit. So, we asked for those documents, unfortunately, they weren't here, so now Greg stepped in.
Yeah, I know she was on the case.
Exactly, in the months of two days, but we, we have, I mean, she had preliminary numbers, which Greg and Dr. Marshall had, and they gotta finish it together.
Yeah.
So, the process, I mean, she hasn't, not any, but she's, she's actually done a lot towards getting the budget finalized, and I think Dr. Marshall and Greg will be...
This committee hasn't seen a single town administrator recommendation, and we've asked for sixty days now.
Yeah.
Well, I think...
So, I've seen it, and you'll get it soon, I would say, 'cause...
Oh, really?
In fairness to Greg, he's just getting his key in the office, and Dr. Marshall, I think, I think you'll have it.
Yeah.
We can't wait.
You'll have it really soon.
Oh, yeah, hopefully by the third, right? Of, of June.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I, I, we're gonna, we're gonna seek some assistance with, um, some of our data entry.
Yeah.
And, and stuff, 'cause that will help us. We, we have good data, you know, we, we just need to have it presented in a way that's movable. In other words, he says, do X, Maureen, we go, we push the button, we do X, and everything else falls into place.
Sure.
Because we don't have that level of documentation at this point in time. And without that level, we, you know what I mean, we can't do, you need us to do, which is to change a number and everything does what it's supposed to do, and...
Yeah, subtract, subtract, and multiply.
Yeah, so, we just, so we just have to make, make sure that happens, and so, we've got some work to do.
Greg, while you're doing all that, there's a couple Warren articles that are gonna potentially cost the town money, too. So, we have to factor in.
We do, we do have some from the assessor and a few others, yeah.
So, supervision.
That was an identical one that he had last year, the year before, right, Jesse?
Well, the assessor usually puts, uh, an article on there for their, um, evaluations. Yeah, that's not uncommon, but we have free cash at least this year.
Because that's all Warren articles.
Well, there's, uh, the DAM article is on there.
Yeah, but the DAM article is going to urge the selectmen to do X.
When's the next meeting?
But it could be amended on the fourth.
Um, so, everyone good with the third of June?
Third is fine.
Same bad time, same bad place.
Third is fine.
And then we will, what do we need, um, how, the public hearing needs two-week notice?
Yeah.
Posted?
And would you, we would have a joint meeting?
That, we, we love nothing more than a joint meeting with the select board.
Did we get a final figure from Jesse on the levy limit, so we don't...
Yeah.
Greg and I were talking about that.
We don't wanna make a mistake again.
Jesse and, um, Greg, and Greg's done some calculations as well. Uh, all the, and we'll, we'll talk to you guys and we'll say, this is what we think for new growth.
I don't wanna put it on Jesse, like, I...
Well, no, Jesse is gonna manage new growth, but we have to say, okay, he thinks, I'll make that one up. He thinks a hundred percent, let's go with eight.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, because we wanna make sure we have a breathing moment here. And I can think, we're, at this point, I already can think...
Mr. Carusa for our new growth.
So, I'm on, I'm on board for that one, and, and, um, and then the other one.
Yeah, and one down, so, back places, like, for sale, already sold.
We'll also need to figure, um, the public hearing. So, if we wait till the third to do that, that means the earliest we'll be able to hold it would be the seventeenth. Or if we wanted to do it, uh, I have, I have challenge on the week of the, uh, the tenth and eleventh. I mean, we could do it on the twelfth, but, or we could do it on the seventeenth.
Do it on the seventeenth, yeah.
Does the seventeenth work for everybody?
Yeah.
'Cause that gives us an opportunity, if we need to meet again that week, even if it's a different day, um, the week of the ninth.
But we need, we need hope you're, you're not gonna have, we're gonna be good.
Yeah.
The, the, the budget will be in conference, you know they're not gonna have a state budget, that's a fantasy. Um, but we will know what the Senate did, we know what the House did. Um, so, we'll be closer to, um, you know, seeing what's happening and what's going to conference, and is there anything going to conference that's gonna impact where our numbers are. Probably not, I'd be kind of surprised. There'll be, there'll be, there'll be numbers in the conference that could impact schools, but that would be a problem, you know, that they've given us our, their number.
Want me to send that to Sandy for the public hearing and, uh, the meeting?
Yeah.
And you thought it was gonna be an easy cycle, didn't you? It's getting kind of squashed, yeah.
Healthcare, I don't know, I've been talking to teachers. They run down the welfare fund, and...
I have not.
Our unions, not just the teachers, but all the unions that run the funds, are coming in and voting way below the...
So, they're running on...
They, yeah, they, so, Teachers International has a health and welfare fund. Because you have bargaining numbers, they actually sell it to the town, including every...
Well, that's, well, that's a man, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and their, their rates are similar to our rate.
Should I talk to Eli, or somebody else?
Uh, don't put him in touch with the person that...
Okay, so, I'll...
You can do exactly what the town has, and make some flow development, and because they're non-profit, their overhead is two percent, five percent. They might be able to save the town.
We never know.
All right, just to recap here, we'll meet on the third with the anticipation to review and make recommendations on the individual department budgets, um, and then follow up with a public hearing here. It worked out here last year, there wasn't a, a large attendance, we'll see what happens, uh, for the seventeenth. And is it...
Don't they have an owl camera down at the senior something, I said?
An owl camera, the senior something?
Uh, we, we can get one now.
College. Yeah, the acoustics are awful.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's...
The acoustics are killing the...
Yeah, so it's, I mean, turnout wasn't fabulous last year for the public hearing, so...
If we see a rumble around and it's gonna be bigger, we can go to Ruggles Lane, you know, and, and do it in a different venue. I think that I, I'll, I'll do the teacher thing, which is probably put together like a little slideshow, blah, 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 you know, so, what we're gonna present to you guys, and you can tweak it up, so that we have something for the hearing that's a little bit more, um, you know, like, okay, this is exactly what we're talking about, these are the numbers, and people can have access to the slide, slides, uh, so...
Yeah, great.
One, one thing, one thing that I think is just a point for you to notice, that the kids from Ruggles Lane had a great day yesterday. They came down in the school, they didn't hold, and they put eight-hundred, well, seven-hundred, tried to change, you know, um, out there, the Legion ears were there, they had the muskets, they did the, well, whatever, it's a big thing for them, beside, no one poked out another student's eye, which I thought was good, because some of the teachers were, you know, and you're, you know, a teacher type, no, you don't give them the sticks too soon. But playing with, but it was great for the kids, we had a lot of parents who showed up, who participated, which was nice. And, um, the, the Quabin, and Quabin sent their entire Browns team then with us that, that morning, which is unusual. And, you know, when they couldn't find a hole where the grid was and stuff, so we had a lot of people helping, it was great. So, just, uh, you know, we, we do have a good relationship with schools.
Yeah, no, absolutely, my, 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 my kids have to show me where they planted their flags, and they, they're, they're more excited than anything, and they, it's a great program that they do.
Yeah.
You know, between the school and collaborating and for preparation for Memorial Day, so...
And, and, and all of the flags and all of the sound systems and everything was all catered by the Cherrywood Foundation. And they, they whined and complained, 'cause I bought new flags this year, 'cause it was so... I was, I'd take every one of those flags out, I'd clean off the bottom, and I store them for a whole year. Some of them get pretty ratty, so we have to get new flags. And you would have thought, I asked some people in the Cherrywood Foundation, just buy really expensive ones, Maureen, never replace them, 'cause none of them fade. And they get wind blowing, and they all had it. And now I have my team out there, and they better have all those flags up.
Well, thank you very much, I think, I, were we, everyone good here?
Yes.
Everyone good?
Yeah, we need a motion to adjourn? Yeah, I, I'm moving adjourned.
Uh, is that that, and we're, we're there.
All right, great, we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second? All in favor? All right.